All right, it is seven o'clock. We will start the Planning Commission meeting now for Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. We will start with opening prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity we have here, Father, to have public meetings and exercise our right as government. I pray, God, that you be with anyone that's not with us here this evening, watch over and protect our families. Father, I thank you for all the blessings that you give us, and I pray that you continue to protect those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes for changes? And do we have a call for motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Casper Briggs.
Yes.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young. Yes. Thank you. We're going to start with new business, and we'll do the public hearing first, or do we hear from Director Taylor first? All right, we'll hear from Director Taylor first. This is on Joyce's Gardens Plan Development.
David Bray with the Bray Firm is requesting Planning Commission approval of a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the Joyce's Garden Plan Development. The property is located at 6778 Old Brownsville Road, which is south of the Rockyford Place Plan Development and west of the Rockyford subdivision within the RS-15 residential single-family lot zoning district. The property is also 27.1 acres. The applicant proposes to subdivide the 27.1 acres of land into a 42-lot residential plan development with three common open space lots. Lot sizes will range from 36,974 square feet down to 8,775 square feet. The new Brownsville extension will cut through the middle of the subdivision, and the development will be built or constructed in two phases. Phase one will be on the northern side of New Brownsville, consisting of lots 1 through 27 and common open space lot A. These lots will be regular-sized lots that will conform with the RS-15 bulk regulations in terms of size and setbacks. Phase two will be located on the southern side of New Brownsville, I'm sorry, of the new Old Brownsville extension, consisting of lots 28 through 42, including two open space areas. Staff has reviewed this application and plan and would like to change our recommendation to continue this request until the August 1st, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, reasons being that the detention areas for this subdivision have not been provided or sized or couped. And we need to see also that the Shelby County tax property lot, which is east of lot 28, also has access, otherwise it'll be landlocked. And the other reason is because of vested rights, we would hate to do an approval without the detention areas being planned, because there's a potential that the applicant could lose some lots if this is approved at this point. So I recommend that we continue until the August 1st, 22 meeting. I presented the plan. I presume that we can continue with the public hearing, and therefore, the next meeting would not be a public hearing, it'd be an open meeting, if you do choose to continue your review till next month. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Director Taylor?
A real quick question. Was the cemetery issue resolved? I think there was a comment.
They will have access from Old Brownsville to the cemetery, I believe, the way that, see how Old Brownsville is looped around under the bottom there?
If I'm going off memory here, I think the comment was something about addressing the...
The lot lines. They don't look the same as they do on the tax assessor website, but no, we haven't seen any updated plans, no.
Any other questions for Director Taylor?
Yep, one more, one more. On that phase two, are those lots direct access onto the new Old Brownsville? Those three lots that are right above the common open space? Yeah, those three right there.
No, and we have a condition that the lots bordering New Old Brownsville do not have access. They have to have interior access. Lots 40, 41, and 42, I would assume, could face with rear logages.
Right.
Because there's an alley there, but access will be from the interior streets.
Okay, so no drive access directly onto New Old Brownsville?
Correct.
Got you. Okay.
One more question. Just to confirm, there is in fact a median section in New Brownsville through there?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
There is a median section in New Brownsville as it goes through there, is that correct?
Yes.
I have a question about the common open spaces. My understanding from reading the zoning ordinance is that they could not be adjacent to a main thoroughfare. Is that incorrect?
Uh...
Would New Old Brownsville be a main thoroughfare?
Hmm, that's interesting. It is, yeah. Good point.
I guess since this is not an official hearing, this is maybe just comments for the applicant to consider, take into consideration today?
Correct.
Okay.
Kim, where those medians are on the road, don't they prohibit access to the drives on the south side?
Well, you may have some of that with a left turn. In other words, some of them will have a right turn.
Somebody's going to have to make some U-turns, too.
Yeah, I have to, for my subdivision.
Is that something to be looked at?
Yes.
And is...
The new hearing will make note of that.
Is the questioning regarding continuing it, is that also because Mr. Bray's not here? Or is that why he's not here?
No, he had...
Oh, his representative's here.
His representative.
Okay, that's fine.
But, yeah. But since we advertised to the public for this meeting, it still has to be a public hearing.
That's fine.
Any other questions for Director Taylor? Do we...
Go to the public.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant? You want to go to the applicant?
I'd like to move that we continue this until our next, until August 1st, is that right? August 1st meeting. Second.
I have a comment for the applicant, but...
Will I...
Can we hear from the applicant, please? If you'll come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Kevin Bray. I'm David's brother. He had another meeting tonight. I live in Bartlett, so 6401 Ferncrest, but I spoke with my brother about this today before I left work, and he mentioned that it was going to be up for continuance.
Okay. We just have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
All right, just one question for the civil engineer, I guess that'd be David. On the preliminary sanitary sewer plan, it looks like some of the inverts are greater than 4% on the sanitary sewer, and I thought that 4% was maybe the max that we wanted to go, just something to consider there, if you're looking at a horizontal drainpipe.
I would check. I thought, Rick, you can answer this better than I can. I thought it was 7.
Yeah, Casper, can you jump up a standard, sir?
Yes. Is it 7?
Yeah, it's 7.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to, well, we had a motion from Jack. Do we have a second, Paul, second to hold it off until August? Do you want to call roll, and then we'll hear from the public, or?
Yep.
Yes.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
All right, so this will be held off until next month's meeting. This is a public hearing, so anyone that is for this or opposed to it can come forward. They will have three minutes to, yes?
One at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anyone that's for this can come forward. They will have three minutes to speak.
Twenty minutes.
For a 20-minute total, and they will need to state their name and address for the record. So anyone for this?
Before this starts, I do have one letter to read into the record for...
Okay.
Okay. So this is from Derwin H. Pugh at 5012 Trent Cove. He said, "Dear Ms. Brock, an official representative for the City of Bartlett, Tennessee, Office of Planning and Economic Development. Per our earlier conversation at your office this morning, I am writing as a resident member of Rockyford subdivision upon reviewing the 6778 Old Brownsville Road, Joyce's Gardens subdivision. I am respectfully requesting the following be addressed to the new plan development. Keep a vast majority of the current greenery, referred to as green space, so that it yet remains particular running between the new planned subdivision and the old existing Rockyford subdivision. The cross street is Rockyford. Prior to this plan development, Joyce's Gardens subdivision, our greenery served as an buffer and a quiet space for many years. The cross street which separates this is Rockyford Road, as the lake is positioned westerly of the subject proximity. Keeping the greenery as well as its current terrain allows for future privacy and, more importantly, the reduction of the inability to access the new plan development from off of Rockyford Road. There should not exist an ingress egress from this street in no possible way, due to it being a narrow road frontage and it not serving as a high-traffic location. Note one: I have worked in the past as a CPTED, Crime Prevention, through environmental, through the University of Memphis Criminology Department, funded through DOJ, Department of Justice. This experience allowed me to walk and provide written professional reports inspecting subject property areas and/or buildings, pre and post-development, in order to have a QOL, Quality of Life, for resident members. In short, my findings from reporting were sent directly to MPD Law Enforcement Directors, as well as our current District Attorney Wyrich's office for statistical purpose. Note two: this narrow parcel runs parallel of the existing cross street..."
I have a question for the chair. Sorry to interrupt. I have a question for the chair. Should that not be included in the 20 minutes? The timer's not on, and the 20 minutes isn't ticking.
In the past, we have not included it, no.
You've not? Okay. Just want to clarify that. Thank you. Again, sorry to interrupt.
It's almost done. I don't know. We haven't in the past, but... In short, a request in keeping subject area as a celebrated entry, green space, will aid in keeping criminogenic activity contained. I sincerely hope that our City of Bartlett, Tennessee, Planning and Economic Development, give strong consideration to these requests while this plan development is yet underway. I am available to discuss if you have additional questions, comments, and/or thoughts. Thank you in advance for your time and interest to have open dialogue with respect to the Rockyford subdivision neighboring community."
Thank you for reading that. All right, anyone else for, that they would like to come forward? All right, seeing that no one is for, anyone opposed would like to come forward and speak? All right, that will end our public hearing, then. Thank you. We will move on to Lucky Hall East, Reesametal. Director Taylor?
The applicant, David Bray with the Bray Firm, is requesting Planning Commission approval of the minor two-lot subdivision for the Lucky Hall subdivision. The property is located at 8673 Ellis Road, within the RS-15 residential single-family zoning district. In an effort to abbreviate the background summary in your report, the Shelby County, I'm going to just abbreviate it, make it a little shorter, the Shelby County Commission approved Lot 1 of the Lucky Hall subdivision and outlined Lot 2 for the future development without fully incorporating Lot 2 into that subdivision plat. So on January 3rd, 2022, staff presented an amendment to that plat to incorporate Lot 2. However, a condition of the plat was for both lot owners to sign the plat prior to recording it. The property owner of Lot 1 refused to sign the plat, and from my understanding, the Lot 1 owner did not want to do so, because they did not want the Lot 2 owner to place a modular structure on the lot. Also, we needed to add a stream buffer on lots 1 and 2 for an existing stream. The application before you tonight is a proposal for the Lucky Hall East two-lot subdivision, which will be a separate plat from the original Lucky Hall plat. Lot 1 will be .96 acres, and Lot 2 will be .96 acres, and .8 acres will be dedicated to the improvements for Ellis Road. The applicant will need to go before the BZA as a condition of this approval for a lot width variance. Since this property is located in the RS-15, the minimum lot width is 100 feet. Once the variance is approved, the applicant will be able to consolidate the two lots into one lot for the replacement of an existing mobile home with a new modular-type home. The property owner has been working with our Code Enforcement Department for the removal and replacement of the mobile home with the modular home. However, without the variances and the newly recorded plat, they cannot obtain a building permit. With that being said, we recommend approval with the conditions as listed in your report.
Any questions for Director Taylor? Okay, thank you.
Are they proposing to install a new mobile home there?
A modular home. They currently have a mobile home on that lot. It's an old mobile home, it's being replaced by a modular home.
What would be the difference?
I believe the chassis, how it looks. It'll look more like a regular home than a mobile home. I believe that HUD does not support mobile homes any longer, but they will support a modular home.
Do we allow that in the city of Bartlett?
There is no distinction in our ordinance for a, at least in the zoning ordinance or the subdivision regs, between a modular home and a regular stick-built home. Modular homes are typically built in sections in a factory and then brought on-site and put on a foundation, whereas mobile homes are on chassis and whatnot. I think Jim Brown could probably explain the type of home that they're proposing more fully to you versus what I could do, because he is our building official.
Well, that's okay. It doesn't, it sounds like per the ordinance, they're allowed to do that. There's nothing, there's no really discussion from our end, it's just what code enforcement will allow.
Yeah, it's not our ordinance, it's HUD. It's more of a HUD. That's a federal housing law.
They're permitted regardless of, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Director Taylor?
Just a couple, or one, really. What is the minimum lot width when you subdivide a property?
In this zoning district, it's 100 feet, so they would need two 50-foot wide, 50-foot variances for the lot width for each of those lots.
Okay, so the 50-foot is a variance. What they're asking for is a variance, then?
No, they're not asking you for the variance, they'll have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the variance. You would have to give a conditional approval for them to move forward to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the variances before they could pull a building permit.
Any other questions for Director Taylor?
Would we be given a recommendation for approval to go?
If you approve this, you're saying you're okay with this subdivision as long as the variance is approved.
If we do not approve it, they cannot still move forward?
Correct. Without an official subdivision, a recorded plat, they can't record the plat until they get your approval and the variance from the BZA.
All right, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? Can you please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Kevin Bray, 6401 Ferncrest. It's my understanding that this is being subdivided to then be combined, because of the ordinance about a one-lot subdivision.
Correct.
All right, any questions for the applicant?
It looks like there's not a lot of room to build a home, they're pretty much locked out from all the easements. Where do you propose the home to be located?
Well, once it's combined back into one lot, there'll be, I believe, room to the south of the utility easement, close to where the hand is. Or, I mean, I don't know exactly where they're talking about putting the house.
You want to put it...
I mean, it'll have to meet the setback requirements.
Is that north of that pipe easement where the hand is located now? That's where they want to build the house?
I mean, again, I don't know exactly where the...
Sorry, where the existing slab is.
Okay.
Can I add a comment to this? So, this is the same similar process as when you all have done a flag lot, when you created a flag lot in an existing lot. You approved it with the condition that it gets a variance from the BZA. I don't know if you guys recall any of those, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Question for Kevin. So if this goes through the process and gets all the approvals, it'd be, you'll end up with one 100-foot-wide lot?
That is the plan, and then, at that point, you know, they didn't really need the variance, but according to state law, you have to have a Planning Commission-approved, subdivided lot on a record, in a recorded plat, in order to get a building permit. So, the only way to do that is to go through all the legal steps, which you are approving and making it all legal, and then they can come back, not to you, but they can just re-record that plat by consolidating them as an administrative procedure.
And that is the expectation?
That's what they're hoping for.
I think the question is, are they planning on leaving it as two lots?
Oh, no.
Okay, we probably need that to be on record. Just a sec.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak on a turn again. I'm filling in, I don't know 100%, but reading this, it says that it's going to go back to one lot after this plan.
Sure seems like we're doing a lot of jumping through hoops, just to get to where we could have, you know, approval.
Yes, but we've looked at, there's no other way of doing it. I mean, a subdivision is the division of two or more lots, according to TCA.
Oh, I understand.
So, it's either, you know, back in the old days, we had all these lots that people owned, and they couldn't do anything with them, so in order to do something with them, this is the process. Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant or Director Taylor? All right, do we have a motion?
Who?
Second.
All right. Casper Briggs.
Yes.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young. Yes. Thank you, it has been approved. All right, we will go on to site plan for Gordon Food Services at 8558 Wolf Lake Drive.
The applicant, Scott Woodard with Woodard Architecture, is requesting a revised site plan approval for Gordon Food Services parking lot. The parking lot is located at the northwest corner of New Brunswick Road and Wolf Lake Drive at 8558 Wolf Lake Drive, and it is located within the CH Business Highway zoning district. In June of 2014, the Planning Commission approved the parking lot for Gordon Food Services that is located in the adjacent building at 8500 Wolf Lake Drive. The applicant is now proposing to add a 3,200-square-foot building with a loading dock on the west side of the lot, of the parking lot. The entire site is currently fenced and screened with both a block wall and chain-link fence that will remain on the property. Access to the site will remain from New Brunswick Road with a shared access easement along the northern side of the property. The applicant will need to go before the Design Review Commission for approval of building materials, colors, lighting, and landscaping. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as stated in your staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Taylor? Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you please step forward and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Scott Woodard, Miss Woodard Architecture, it's PO Box 1764, Collierville, Tennessee.
All right, any questions for the applicant?
Yes. Do you know what they're proposing to do in this building?
Yes, it's going to be offices, there's going to be cubicle offices, there's going to be one, two, three closed offices, there's going to be a meeting room, and there's going to be an interior dock area. Basically, this is for their trucking operations to, as far as they're going to manage and do everything that they're doing now in the bigger building next door. They're just moving it all out of there into this one, because there's a client that's taking over the whole building next door.
Okay.
That makes, okay?
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, one quick question there. Any reason why the handicap spaces are set away from the building as opposed to what is, what I consider typical and...
Right.
Of common sense to put them right up to the front entry door?
Well, what we've got is a slope issue here at the building. It drops, probably, the length of that building is 40 feet, and it's dropping probably a good 24 inches from the front to the back, so it's a constant slope. We've looked at trying to re-slope things, but we can't get it to meet ADA requirements. So the ones across the street, they are very, they're right online with it, and, I mean, that's kind of the best we can do right now.
Okay, I'm taking your assumption that the way you have it drawn and drafted, it's in compliance with ADA?
Yes.
Slope and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What about the parking count? I'm assuming this lot right here handles the parking for the main building next door, is that correct?
No, no.
Oh, it does not? Okay.
This is strictly, was strictly at the beginning, just truck docking or truck storage or trailers for Gordon Food Services.
Okay.
Yeah, well, now we're bringing the office, oops, excuse me, over to there, and they're going to abandon the office that they currently have and downsize.
Okay. Good. The only comment that I have for you is, it looks like you're running your sanitary sewer underneath the detention basin, which looks like that's about six or seven foot below where you're starting?
Right, yeah. Yeah. Um, I'll just have to leave that up to my trustworthy civil engineer who's not here right now, but, uh, we will make whatever necessary adjustments for that. Um, if he feels he can get it and working and we've got enough depth out there in the street, then that's, we'll put it, I guess, and-
All right, certainly.
We keep it at the proper percentage and grade.
Certainly, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Real quick, just want to make-
Sure.
Assurance that you've read the comments and conditions from staff, you're good with all that?
Yes, yes, we are.
That being the case, I make, I move that we approve with recommendations from staff. Second.
Casper Briggs.
Yes.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young. Yes. All right, thank you, it has been approved. Do we have any open discussion to discuss? All right, with that being said that there isn't any, we will adjourn this meeting, thank you.